Hey, everybody.
Before we begin, for those of you who've never been on a commission before or council, make sure that you talk into the microphone. So you're gonna pull the microphone a little bit closer. Make sure it's on. You're gonna share with Jenny. She's nice. She always let you share. We try very hard not to talk over each other, so one at a time. But the main thing is that we are being recorded, so you do wanna talk into your microphone, okay? Unless you're making a joke, in which case you will say quietly to yourself. So with that said, this is the Bisbee Arts Commission. I wanna open this meeting on Monday, February 6, 2024, at 5:30 PM. First thing, roll call. Ginny Druckmann, here. Kurt Hauser.
Here.
Janet Reynolds.
Here.
Angela Rockefeller.
Present.
Karen Schumacher.
Present.
Tracy Taylor.
Here.
And Richard Ware.
Ware.
Ward, Ward, okay. Ward. Oh, there's a Z on there, okay.
Yep.
So let me grab a pen and I will make a... And Leslie Johnson's here, as well as our fabulous liaison.
Sorry, Karen. I usually have a backup pen and I don't even have a single one for myself.
No, no, I brought one.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
By the way, this date is correct. It's the fifth today.
Oh, my gosh.
Good catch. Like to address that.
I know, we can come back tomorrow.
You got it. What? You touched me? Alright, everybody. I had to borrow Mr. Ward's. I'm sorry.
How is this possible?
I want to share.
Oh, we can share. Wow, you're actually generous.
We're off to a good start here at the Bisbee Arts Commission. The first thing I'm gonna do, and so there's some, we essentially go through, um, on the next meeting, I'm gonna go through a few rules and things. This time I didn't want to, just 'cause we have a four big party coming up. But you'll get the idea of it. If you guys have any questions, you just let me know, okay?
Yeah.
So item one, approval of the minutes of the January 8th, 2024 meeting. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the minutes of January 8th, 2024 meeting.
And Janet, second. All ayes? Aye. Any nays? Then approved. Say nothing, spawn. See, this is really easy. Do that. Do that all by yourself.
I like to see how fast you can do it.
You're gonna see at the bottom of each thing, when there's a motion, they have clearly written out what to say, so that you can, so the, you know.
It'll be appropriate.
Yeah.
You can just read it.
And I just sort of drew them out for us.
It's pretty cool stuff.
Yep.
So item two, discussion regarding Tracy Taylor's suggestion for a plaque for Bill Higgins' bench and Gracie Clark. I wanted to put that on there. It's not a motion. Tracy had brought that up because, um, I don't know if you guys know, we... A very close friend of mine and a long-term art commissioner and also a city council member recently passed away. And Tracy had brought up the idea of having a plaque put there.
So can I talk about it?
Yeah, yeah. Into the microphone.
Into the microphone. Can I see? Okay. Um, so Bill was such a fantastic human and such a vital part of the Bisbee community. And I know that he does have his little Bill Bench down at the Smithsonian. Um, I did think that maybe we'd like to replace that bench and make it a little bit bigger and do a in memoriam. Um, he did buy that bill for himself, I believe. Is that true? So I would like to also keep that piece. But I think if we got a bench that wasn't quite as weathered and a little more together, I've sat on that bench. It's a little wobbly. Um, I think it's something that we as a commission and the city of Bisbee should do. So that was why I asked for that to be on the agenda, and those are my ideas. And certainly, Karen, you would be the person to advise us as to how or why or if that should even move forward.
Well, we would, if we wanted to do something like that, I mean, I would also probably recuse myself in that vote, I guess. But we would wanna talk to Parks and Rec and see, because it does go through that commission, any changes. Um, I think those benches were bought at, just as benches, like a lot of the benches that are around the city were actually made by Bendale. But those two are not.
Right.
You know, the ones that are just complete metal are Bendale benches. Um, I don't know if it would be wise, I don't think we could afford a Bendale bench.
I'm just, I'm just seeing, like, replacing the bench that's there with probably another bench like it. It's just becoming a, it's a little weathered and a little worn. And I've sat on it for embarrassingly, like, two or three hours on a couple of different su- Sundays.
Bill Higgins said that was his office.
Yeah, and it's a, it started, it's just starting to get a little wobbly. And so I just felt like we should do something to honor Bill and his commitment and his service to the city. And since there's already a Bill Bench, I just thought, replace it, put his old plaque on it, but then put a new bench as an in memor- in memoriam. And thank you for his service.
So to move forward on that, I think the best thing would be, I know that when the city buys equipment like that, there are certain suppliers that deal with, you know, because it has to last for a certain period of time.
Yes.
So if that's okay, I'll, I'll talk to Parks and Rec. I'll talk to Josh at Parks and Rec and see what he has to say about that, maybe talk to him. And then it would have to go through the committee, I think, to see. I can't imagine they would have a problem, but we, just for the sake of protocol, we're gonna have to go through Parks and Rec.
So I have no problem taking that on as a project if you would prefer not to have to deal with one more thing in that avenue.
No, that, if you want to, yeah, you know Joshua.
I do.
So you can ask him too and see what, you know, how would you go about that. That bench is starting to get a little warm now.
Yeah. So, so would you like me to take?
That would be great.
Have to do that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, that would be great.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Does anyone have anything else to say or any questions about that? I know it's, it's a little confusing in the beginning. It's like all these things, people you don't know, but you would totally get the hang of it really fast. That one is very specific to something that happened in the last few months. But does anybody have anything they'd like to say?
No, I mean, I look forward to hearing what kind of, uh, information Tracy gets.
Let's make it hot pink.
Yeah.
Do you wanna hot pink?
I'll let the city, you don't like that.
I think that more, more likely than not, it would be the Smithsonian that would not like that.
They have a, so they, it's weird, they have a lease, but it's not their park. But she's very nice. I would ask her to.
She's very nice. I'll talk to her too.
She'll be a good one. Yeah, the pink may not be perfect for an historical setting. I'm not.
Maybe the plaque needs to be pink.
I know Bill wants it pink. But yeah, I, I, I have some sources on different places to get, like, the aluminum plaques and things, so. Anything else about the item two?
Nope.
Then we'll go ahead to item three, discussion regarding the cigar machine party. So, coming up, your timing is impeccable, gentlemen.
Yes.
On February 11th, this Sunday, we are having a Valentine-themed, a party fundraiser slash appreciation party for our cigar artists. If you're not familiar, the cigar machine is the machine that's in the convention center where we have local artists who sell small works of art and we take half the money. And because of that and because of that machine, we do not have to have a big fundraiser every year, which is a relief. This is fundraiser season and we don't have to participate on a large scale because it's a lot of work. Um, and so we're gonna have appetizers, um, we're gonna have live music, there'll be a cash bar, just to give you some ideas. And that's from four to seven. And obviously, both of you are welcome to attend. And you're even more welcome to volunteer. So let me give you, before we go on, I'm gonna give you the breakdown of what we've done ticket-wise so far, okay? So, so far, on Eventbrite, we sold 18 tickets. It's fairly slow. Square, 17 tickets. Cash, 14 tickets. Checks, two tickets. So far, we've sold 51 tickets, which I actually feel fairly okay about.
Cash only 14 tickets? There's gotta be more than that.
Just curious. No, those are the amount. So let's look. One second. So it was $2.79 plus $1.50. That's why we have calculators, right?
Right.
$2.79 plus $1.50 equals $4.29, which is a random number.
It's such a random number.
Someone got one-third of a ticket. And then divided by 30, that comes to 14 tickets in cash. So, but I mean, that means square and cash, which you've been doing together, it's, yeah.
It's fine, Justin. I'm gonna make sure.
So, um, checks, so 51 tickets sold so far. You guys sold quite a few tickets last week, so I feel like we may be, there may be significantly more. Keep in also consideration, there are 10 to 15 artists attending. And then there are also seven commissioners and Leslie.
And Leslie.
So at this moment, my estimate, this is before adding on, that's 68 to 73 people. I'm guessing there's going to be at least 30 more, some at the door, some are you, and some are the artist friends or whatever. So that brings us to over 100, which is what we were going for.
Yeah.
Yeah. So when you do the breakdown, it sounds a little bit, but then you're like, oh, wait, that's actually quite a lot of people.
So, um, next Saturday, I know, um, I'm gonna be selling tickets for just an hour there at the table. Could we use more than one person at the table? I can come earlier.
Two is great. I know you guys have been coordinating that 'cause I work on Saturdays. It's really up to you guys. We can, yeah.
Okay.
Um, you could overlap.
Yeah.
Because you're going from nine to 12.
Nine to noon. Okay, well, I'll get there at least by 11:30. In that way, we have time to pass the torch.
Yeah, I think, I think that two people at the booth, at the booth work better.
Okay.
Just from a market standpoint, like, somebody may have to go grab something to eat or use the facility or, you know. So I think that I'll, I think that is.
Yeah.
And I would be there, probably in and out all morning.
Oh, okay.
And whenever I was speaking.
Ginny's a dynamo.
Yeah.
Whenever I was speaking with somebody on the last couple of weekends, inevitably, someone else would come up at the same time.
Yeah.
True.
Two people were nice.
The only thing about that is that I would love it if we could keep track a little better actually how many tickets we're selling. Just, that's something I've been.
Well, I did, I numbered, I numbered them for you guys. But honestly, so this is, this is accurate. This is, there's no way this isn't.
Not worrying about that.
Okay. But I did number them. That, you know, but you, you gave her more, right? You now have a few more paper tickets.
I have 11 tickets in here and they're not getting all that much order.
That's all the ones you can want.
Thank you very much.
He sold those to give her any trouble. Alright. So, I believe we are going to be great.
I know we're gonna be great. I know we're gonna be great. I have, um, five people that don't have paper tickets yet, so.
Um, to make it easy, I have made a party checklist.
Woo-hoo.
That really dorky.
I'm tired of checklists.
That's good. Let's pass it to you there. And I'll give one for the record, too. You want a party checklist?
Yes. Hi, checklist.
I'm not saying it has everything, but I just saw it. So. Party checklist. Print out artists and Eventbrite guest lists. That's because they did not get paper tickets. That's my job.
Okay.
I wrote that note. They will not have a ticket. Side note to everyone, if anybody who eventually does the door at this party, artists don't get chips.
Yeah.
The chip is for, I know that, I see, but I'm just.
It's hilarious.
The chip is, the, people who bought a ticket get a cigar pack, like, which is the, you know. But the artists are not paying, they're just coming for the food and stuff, so we're not giving them their art back to them. As nice as we wanna be, so, no.
And just so everybody knows, Jenny and I did find little pins for the artists.
Oh, you did?
Oh, you did?
Are you making pins for us?
I am making pins for all the commissioners.
Right. And then we have little heart, you know, we have little Valentine pins for, so they all, all the artists, everybody will know who artist, artist.
Okay.
Uh, second, decoration of Roca. So Ginny and Tracy pillaged Schmikels with a 50% off coupon.
65%.
I think 65%.
It was 65% off.
I had the expectation that Roca is going to look quite like a boudoir. Which is the point, because it's Valentine's Day, really. So now that we have all those things, coordinating who wants to come early and help decorate.
Maybe Kurt?
Here's, if everybody would like to see the, um, centerpieces that we made, here they are.
Hold on, I see the, that's on now. So the party opens at four, right? So I would assume we'd be there.
We are allowed in at noon, so I would say we should go at noon.
Um, is, who would like to come decorate? Who would like to come help with that? That's not an obligation. I don't think it will take, it'll just take a few of us, right?
I'll come at noon and help decorate.
I'll come at noon and help decorate.
So that's why I have a thing where you can, if you can get a job, you can run it to yourself.
I can sign.
You want to?
Well, I can come at decorations.
Oh, yes, you're doomed.
And I will too.
Did anybody, no. Is anybody else would like, would they like to?
Yeah, I can.
Okay, Janet. Who else? Me, Karen.
Me.
So we need to call a forum from noon until nine o'clock that night.
Okay.
That's just to cover it. When there's, when there's more than four of us in a place, we have to legally call a forum to announce to the public that we're together.
To love.
And we'll go over to some of these other rules in the next one, okay? Um, are there any other decorations or anything we need?
Uh, not beyond what we've got.
Wait, what?
I hate to ask that question.
It's 'cause of the dollars.
So, selling tickets at Saturday market, you guys have that covered? Everybody feels like they know what they're doing?
Can I just know who's coming at what time from, with my market hat on, please? So Janet, you're nine.
You're getting there at nine, right?
Nine to noon.
Angela, 11:30 to whenever market breakdown.
So 11:30 to 1:00?
Uh-huh.
And Jenny's a floater?
Uh-huh.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
So you, you have the bag and everyone's.
I know, it's, there's always, it's, just because we've been planning this, so this, it won't feel like this for every bag, probably.
We were just nailing it, you know.
We're just super. There were a few poor souls who, who came onto the commission right at the, right before the art festival. That was good.
Oh, it's all, it's all there comes for this, yeah.
Yeah.
So.
So, go ahead.
Do you have the tablecloth and all that?
I have all the equipment.
So you'll be there at nine?
Yes.
And I have the table.
Yes.
So I'll have the table put in the place where you guys are gonna be.
Yes.
And could you all bring your own chairs this time?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And, uh, I'm going to leave the square with you.
Yes.
Um, bring it Sunday. So the, bring cash box. I have a cash box?
Now you've signed it?
Yeah, yeah, it's all fine. I just panicked, because it's, they told me that it's not due out.
Great to have two squares.
Yeah.
So I'll bring a cash box. We have all the change from the cash.
You're bringing, I'm sorry, when, when you bring cash boxes?
Sunday.
Thank you, yeah. So part of this is that we're giving away cigar boxes. Some of the artists have been very good about giving, some of them even have Valentine-themed art they make.
Oh, yes.
So we won't have a representation of everyone, but we're gonna have plenty.
Okay, good.
So I will pack enough and steal some by the machine if I have to, to have a real selection.
And I'm also still packing some.
You are too. And you have those little Robin Brink painters over there.
Yeah.
And then, um.
So I have about 35 pieces, I think, total.
See, you get what you get, Karen, the Bisbee Arts Commission. You know what? Ginny Perry made more. God, she's like a machine. She's amazing. And then, um, Gretchen Hill made some beautiful little lino cuts that were hearts and things.
Awesome.
They're super beautiful, yeah.
Um, cigarette trays.
I'm in the middle of making them.
Kelly, Kelly Galigan has another one. Do we want that one? I don't know why she has it.
How many cig, how many?
I, I'm making two.
But how many people? So it's you and who else?
Well, there'll be, if everybody who says they're coming, comes, there'll be two full-timers and me filling it.
So we need three trays or no?
Two is enough.
That's why I'll send you my gender neutral cigarette people.
Yes, cigarette people.
Not cigarette women, ladies, girls, it's cigarette people. We're all open. Um, so we have enough cigarette people.
Yes.
And this doesn't sound quite as good when you go to our.
As long as you guys are okay with me coming in costume and.
Angela wanted to. I, after I said that.
I'm more comfortable in costume.
Are we all coming in costume?
I have heart-to-heart glasses for it.
Aren't we all coming in costume?
We're doing, it's a cocktail party, so wait, I'm just making my.
I'm having my cocktail costume on.
Oh, I can dr- I'll dress up as a giant martini.
It just got no damn, because it was a Valentine theme. I know, it's gotten very girly. It's not always this girly. I'm just telling you.
That's good.
So I'm gonna go down the list. Everybody can wear what they want.
Pink would be nice.
Name tags. Wait, have we gone, I'm really sorry, but I really wanna go, like, if I can pack enough cigar boxes.
We talked about it, Je- Je- I.
Yeah, Karen and I have that taken care of.
Karen and Angela have taken care of.
I'm sorry. Okay, that's why I did it.
Yep.
Cigarette trays, alright.
Gotta take care of it and we have a backup.
Cigarette people, alright.
Gotta take care.
Name tags. I'm, so you guys have name tags for the artists. I'll make everyone a name tag on the artist's.
It's not a name tag, it's just a little, it's just a Valentine pin.
Well, with, the ones I'm making with the bud machine will have your name on it.
Yeah, I want my.
For the commissioners.
The commissioners.
I want my name on the counter.
You can't change your name. Alright.
This is all a part of your gift, guys.
It's fine, this is a little silly than usual, but we're just going down the list. This is why I made a list.
This is absolutely not silly, thank you.
Print info flyers and grant applications. I'm gonna do that through right into my.
You have to.
We have a lot of grant applications.
What about the info flyers?
We have a lot.
We have a lot.
Yeah, I think we have a ton left over from the art exchange, the art swap.
We have, we have about this many.
That's a lot. Janet, don't you, did you take the ones that were not cut?
They're all trimmed.
Perfect, so.
We have enough. If you have them, will you bring them Sunday?
Absolutely.
Sure.
Cause that, does that take something off of your list, Karen?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Jenny and Janet.
I'm doing good. I have some stuffed cigarette boxes and make name tags.
Okay.
Um, additional needs.
Oh, my gosh, this is such a long agenda item. I'm just kidding. Oh, you meant for the party?
Yeah.
Not personal.
We're not talking about needs.
Is there anything else to the party that needs to be done that I have not thought of? We're about to go into giving people times to the door, so that's.
Do we need any check-in with Rod?
So I do check in with Rod.
I did, I just did.
So that, so we're gonna say a hundred, right? Tracy?
Yes.
And, I mean, is that?
That's what I gave, that's the number you just.
Okay, so if later in the week, if I've sold 30 more tickets, and then by Saturday, if we'd sold another, you know, if we sold 50 more tickets, we would let them know.
Yeah, so what I told him just now, when Karen did the numbers, because I promised him numbers last week and we didn't know. Um, so I just quick-texted him and I said, we think there'll probably be about 100, and then, well, we can just go from there. So like, if you sell enough tickets to play over 100, we'll just give them the new number.
Okay.
Okay?
I do love them. I keep saying that. Alright, additional, is there anything else that we need? We have.
Oh, yes, I need to know about money for the musicians. Because the musicians, I've added a musician, and.
I don't know what we got.
Three.
Oh, I just need to put a check request. Can you tell me the names?
It's $200?
Whatever. Oh, yeah, yeah, the, the, that, that I know, but what, who activated check requests for the specific people?
Each of them?
Will you text me?
I'll text you the names, 'cause I still have to.
Unless one of them wants to take the money on behalf of all.
I'm pretty sure it would be Brian Mullins.
Keep an eye on that.
Considering it's Christopher.
We can also pay them in cash.
That's always been.
I think that's probably the best way to go on. That was so nice for them.
It's a little bit bypassing some of protocol, but they, they'll forgive us.
You never heard that part.
No, we, that's fine, we've done it before. So is that gonna be the plan, then? Yeah, because we, that's why, I, I'm just gonna keep all the cash from this event till the end anyway. Okay. That makes it easy, because when we do a check request to the city of Bisbee, it has to go on the agenda, and then it has to be voted on by the council. It's just like, it would be a must. Yeah.
Yeah. That's great.
Chops for commissioners, decoration, figure that out. To the door, I think it's only fair that everybody doesn't have to be the door the whole time. Does anybody see one of these times and think, oh, my God, I would love to do that?
I can do the door for the first part if I'm allowed.
Yeah, you can have it the whole day.
Yeah, I'll take the door from 3:45 to 4:45.
Awesome, thanks, Leslie.
And the reason it's 3:45 is that everyone who has done events knows, Izzy shows up early. You're so true.
Especially for Roca.
I'm happy to jump in wherever's helpful.
Do you wanna do the door? You wanna try it?
Whatever you want.
You're welcome to. Um, let's put you down for a time and then we're gonna all be there. So if there's any questions, then everybody else is gonna be floating and hopefully talking about how great the Arts Commission is.
Yeah.
It's your job, right? So yeah, we'll put you down for the next time. And who would like to do, this is the.
I could do the last time.
Alright, gentlemen. You already won me over here.
I can do cleanup too.
Yeah, so that would be, so you would be the 5:45 and then all the way to cleanup?
Yeah.
Is anyone not attending? Are we all coming?
I'm probably leaving before cleanup. Cause we, how seriously.
You in the Super Bowl, right?
Yeah.
I know you love the Super Bowl.
Oh, yeah.
We totally forgot and planned this on the Super Bowl. That's like.
It passed, it passed by five people before we realized that it was a. Rod, it passed through all of us. I haven't even think about it.
I got, I heard a lot of crap about that yesterday from my daughter, who's never watched game sports in her life.
You can tell her. I'll do it with her later.
This endears me, endears me to the board. We don't know if the Super Bowl is.
Well, that just endeared us, uh, to us, to you to us. You're already.
Fortunately, there's not a lot of crossover between people who are really into the Arts Commission apparently and the Super Bowl.
But I think it is starting right at 4:00. It is starting at 4:00, because it starts at 6:00 on the East Coast, which we make it 4:00 here.
We have waited all of their events, only to hit one that was the, one of the biggest ones.
I just said that that's the night that Rod offered, so that's the night.
Thanks, Rod. We're doing, everything's turning out fine, so I'm not worried about it.
But also, the Super Bowl is always on this past weekend, so I don't understand why, it's always on the first.
It's Taylor's fault.
No, it's Taylor's.
We at the Bisbee Arts Commission have decided that it is Taylor's fault.
Got it.
Um.
And we're all staying for cleanup. Anybody who's there is gonna just go to cleanup, correct?
Yeah.
And we'll, as we, if we're all there, so those who, who don't come at noon, I would ask everyone to be there around 3:30, and, um, we can see, we can have panic of figuring out, there's something we have to do last minute. I do not believe we have to supply plate for, cups or anything. And it is a cash bar, so I don't have to worry about that. Honestly, it's, ladies, it's.
Pretty simple.
Yeah, simple.
Yeah, nice.
And it'll be, it'll, it will just be nice. It'll be fun. You'll meet a lot of people in, in the art community, and I think it'll be great.
And it's gonna work so beautifully.
And the costumes, the costumes are pretty.
Yeah. Um, most of, it's always funny, because in front of it like this, some of us who live here, we know everyone, but yeah, if anyone looks under 30, you should definitely check their ID. Though, you know.
But also the, the bartender is an employee of Roca, so they will also check.
As a door person, what you're doing is you either have a list of the people from Eventbrite, the artists, and let them in, or they give you a ticket and you let them in. And if, um, you're giving them, if they have a ticket or they bought a ticket, then you also give them that chip. And we'll go through, you explain to them, they can go up to any of the beautiful cigarette people and, you know, decide which cigarette box they want. So they leave with that, and then we all eat too much food and hopefully drink a little too much wine, and we all feel better about the art community.
Yeah.
Um. I tried to make it simple. Does that seem okay?
That was, I loved that checklist, because I'm.
Karen, I do have a question, um, for the call time for the cigarette people, 3:30? Or should they come a little earlier?
Do they wanna change there, or do they wanna change how?
I'm assuming they'll show up in costume?
You can change, they can change there. Because Rod has provided the third floor room.
Oh, okay.
For a change in.
So if they do want to.
If they want to change there.
But, but yeah.
3:30 probably.
Okay.
Alright. Excellent. Anything else?
Yeah, can I just go back really quickly? Jenny, I know people last week didn't have tickets. You have those, that number, and you're gonna give those people tickets? You have those, you know.
Well, or you, here's my question.
You can give me a list of their names and I'll fill out the list.
Okay, there we go.
Alright. Why can't I have paper tickets if I could say?
If you could just send me that list, I'll, I'll add it to the menu.
I'm totally ready to do that.
Yeah. Any other questions, concerns, complaints, um?
About the party.
About the party.
Just making sure we stay on top.
We have to stay on top of it, thank you. Thank you, vice chair.
It's gonna be fun.
Yeah, I think it will really be fun. Usually I have a lot of anxiety right before these things, but this one is not. What actually is making me anxious.
It's gonna be fun.
Item four, discussion regarding the bulletin board restoration, possible approval of the cost to replace the cork on the bulletin board. This agenda item's just on the agenda every time.
It is tattooed.
I did not get a chance to go look at it. If it's okay with the commission, I would like to move to table list.
I would like to move.
I'd like to update you too.
Yeah, please, please.
I don't know if, I, I sent a, an email to everybody with photographs, but my copy didn't come across with photographs.
I didn't see that. I didn't get photos.
Okay. It's because of having to come through the system.
Let's try it again, yeah.
Okay, I'll do it. But, um, I also was over at the bulletin board the other day, and Bendale was there. And I said, Bendale, can I talk with you about this? And, what?
Is it okay? Okay.
How'd it come?
Yeah, what he said.
We were great. He goes, I, I said, I just wanna, I wanna look at this, where the bezel is, and, you know, the way that I'm seeing this is we'll need to replace the wood, we'll need to replace the, the cork on the wood. Um, and then we just, we take the wood out, it's a template, to cut our cork, to cut our new board. And we just put it back in the bezel, you know, with the adhesive on it, and tighten it down. And he goes, that's all there is to it. And he said, when you do it, if you'll let me know, I'll come help you.
See, he's one of my closest friends, and when I asked him about. See, he's one of my closest friends, and when I asked him about just replacing it, that's when the whole conversation, he was like, I don't wanna do that, I wanna make it twice as big. And I was like.
No, no, this was great, this was, the whole.
Well, maybe, I might make you the official Ben Dale regular.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I.
Because when I, Ben and I talked, we ended up like.
I need his phone number though, you need his phone number.
I can, I can.
Yeah, I can.
And, and he's got my name, and he's got my number, and he said, no, well, we can totally make this happen.
It was just concerning, I didn't wanna hurt, I just didn't, there were, he really wanted to make it bigger, but the amount of money, it was, it was just not too much.
Thanks, Rob.
It was too much for us at this moment.
It was not an issue.
That's great.
It was not at all an issue.
Not, I will, that's perfect, so we'll, we'll put the cost in the next one, can, uh, do I have a motion to?
I move to table, item, agenda item number four, the discussion regarding the bulletin board restoration, a possible approval of the cost to replace the cork on the bulletin board to the next Arts Commission meeting in March.
I second.
That was great. All ayes?
Hi.
Any days?
Thank you.
This is a.
I'll be back on the agenda.
I would put it on the agenda for the next few years.
I think we just put a key put in on there, just cause it feels like it should be there.
No, something's missing.
Yeah, item, it's the bulletin board, item five, discussion impossible approval of all major VAC event calendar dates. Hey, look, I did that too, there you go.
Oh, yeah.
Really? I was, I was on it.
So cute.
Oh, you pre-reprinted, okay.
Alright, thanks.
You're so proud.
It's not a lot, I even put it in big font, those are the ones that we talked about.
That's a nice number.
That is a nice number.
So those are, so just, so this is obviously the shenanigan.
Oh.
These are, are you familiar with the art exchange?
Not sure.
We did it at the farmer's market last fall, so what it is, is that we asked the community to donate any unused art supplies, and then we redistribute them, it's really quite communistic, honestly. Um, to anyone who wants to come to the farmer's market, pick it up, and that way, people have things that they haven't been using, and all, all kinds of people got art supplies, little kids got art supplies. And it's so much good feedback.
It was a great event.
So we just, we just coordinate, organize that, we take what we get, and then we just set it out and organize it, and let people take it, and it really is just like, it's simple and happy making.
It's so much fun, because everybody's like, they're free, it's free, and so, it was a very nice morale booster for everybody.
On the, on the other side of that, there are people that are letting go of art supplies, and there's a great healing that happens.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was all around the box.
I have a helium having space again.
Um, to fill it right back up with art supplies.
Yeah.
But, um, those are just, we also have a, you know, we give out flyers and grant applications, the main thing about the Arts Commission is that we give out, we raise the money that we raise to give out money to the community to make art, and so that's just a good opportunity to talk to people about doing grants, or donating to the Arts Commission, or things like that. Um, and then the other one is the gallery owner meeting.
Before you move on from that though, just so that the, our new members know.
Please.
Um, most of the art supplies are brought that day, right, and dropped off?
Uh-huh. Yes.
So, so there's no like stopping at one place and loading a car, and then unloading, it's just that everybody just brings their stuff that day, we supply the tables, we supply the people, and then it's perfect, so. Just so you know, so it's not like a, meet us at seven AM at the Central School Project and.
No, no.
Bring it up, bring a truck.
And we've been doing it at, we, we did the last one at the farmer's, or the community market, it seemed like the best thing for that. So this is a, the gallery owners meeting then is, um, we get, we get together with all the gallery owners in Bisbee, and talk about needs and things. We have an agenda item coming up that kinda came out of that, one of the things that they had wanted was, you know, like some sort of pamphlet about public art. You know, we just, it's just, so we can touch base with them and see where they're at. Um, and then we have another one, just because this only has four items, doesn't mean this is all we're going to do, these are just the things that we wanted to set in stone. We do not, at this point, have a big fundraiser, because the cigar machine takes care of that. The thing that is missing.
Yes.
Is the giant art exhibition. So a couple of years ago, we did a very large art exhibition, and we decided last meeting, or the meeting before, that we were going to do it in twenty twenty-five. It's where we had over, you know, a hundred and fifty artists, and we did a book, and we had a huge show, and it was very expensive. We want to do that again, but it seemed like we were gonna wait until twenty twenty-five for that. So this mostly is just about approving these days.
Yep.
Does anybody have any issues, concerns, complaints about this? Then do I have a motion?
I move to approve the major Bisbee Arts Commission event calendar dates for the year twenty twenty-four.
Do I have a second?
Have a second.
All ayes?
Aye.
Any days?
Thank you guys.
Then item six, discussion regarding public art project.
Yeah, so, um.
You would explain a little bit what that was, like I kinda touched on it.
Okay, so originally, this has been very much kind of a seed that was planted, um, as Karen mentioned, at our last gallery owner meeting. And we weren't really sure what the best way to approach it was, we first started reaching out to like Cochise College and University of Arizona, and seeing if there were college students that might wanna take on the process of going around and documenting all the public art, and trying to get information about the, the artists who created it, when it was put up, and then we wanted to start to gather, um, research on how to best preserve those pieces of art. Um, I contacted some other cities that are around us to try to find out how they were doing a similar process.
Or events would be.
Yeah, and, um, really, it came back to us cleaning the slate and saying, we need to put out a call to the public. And have them bring the information to us, and that that would be a good jumping off point, because the fires we were trying to start just kept getting blown out.
So after this party, um, should we put that call to the public out?
I am, yeah.
So what we'll put out is on social media, we can put it in the paper too.
Mm-hmm.
Um, just a general like, is there any, do you have murals next to you, or any public, like any, it doesn't necessarily, when we say public art, we're also including murals that are on private property, which we cannot help people fix, but we can tell them how to take care of it. And that was some concern, is that we have some really cool public art that needs care, and that people don't sort of know how to do that. But putting that together with a flyer of like once, public art that people could go see if they were here in town.
Like a little tour.
Yeah, but just getting kind of a catalog of all the murals and everything that we have in the community. And that seemed like the easiest way was saying, hey, public, send us a photo and location of like what's near you, and then that makes it so that we aren't physically having to go out into your backyard.
Yeah, and I think that, I, I not speak for everybody, but I think we all agree that that was a really good starting off point, a good sounding jump. Is let's just identify the art first.
Yeah, I think that is, and I, that's still, so we're still on the same thing, it's just I haven't done, we haven't done it yet because of that, so we'll still go. So after the party's over next week, maybe I'll start putting up something together and putting it out there.
Yeah.
Sound good?
Mm-hmm.
Any comments?
Okay, can I ask how we all reached out to the college, and how that, or Cochise College?
I did, so actually, I didn't reach out to Cochise College, I reached out to University of Arizona, I saw some, one of the other commissioners, I just couldn't reach out.
No, because it was the same meeting where we decided that.
Oh, yeah, we said not to.
We decided it'd be better not to go to Cochise and just go to U of A.
Oh, okay.
Cause they have like an architecture and an art, and it's just a larger group of students to pick from.
Yeah. Okay.
So I'm, I'm in tight with the head of the arts department and the dean at, um, Cochise College at the Ceremonial State Campus, and could, I would want some more information on the project, and all that kinda stuff, but I'm willing to at least bring it up to them, um, I know they offer a lot of extra credit kinda stuff for students and things along those lines, so.
No, well, maybe it would hurt to do it both, to do both.
Well, maybe, and maybe one way to do it would be pull that call out there.
Pull the call out.
And then have, see if we can get someone, an intern position to, to start organizing it.
Yeah.
Yeah, like, but that'd be great, if you wanna do that, see if anybody would be, just with this, explaining that we're not, we're still formulate, you know, we're form, formulating this idea, but.
Yeah, I think the, I think the public call is good, but, um, yeah, I, I did the sculpture for the pit partners last year.
Oh, cool.
And so they.
So you know, like me.
I, I also, I work at Cochise College, I teach, I teach in the music department.
Okay, lovely.
With your powers combined.
Yes.
No, that's great, one of the dreams of Sharon, Stedder, rest in peace, was that.
Don't say that, I'll say that.
From the Arts Commission, was an intern.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And this is a situation where we do need somebody to help us, once we have all this, we have all that information. We need someone to help us put it all together, cause it's kind of a full-time job for a little while, you know?
Yeah, right.
So that'd be great, if you wanna just broach the subject with them, that would be awesome.
And it's not a paid position.
Yeah. Well, and just FYI to the new commissioners, like, trust me, we all, like, there's no like, this is mine.
I don't know.
You know, trust us, like.
There's very much a, it's very much a, this is yours now.
Yes.
See you later.
I got it, I got it, I got it, you get it.
Boom, exactly, um, that would be great.
Yeah.
Anything else about item six? Then item seven, we are familiar with this update discussion regarding the fall of winged cigar art machine, I just turned, fourth quarter, I think I announced this last time. Fourth quarter twenty twenty-three, made thirty-three hundred dollars.
That's great.
Awesome.
And so I turned it in today, took me a while, but, and then last month, hold on, I'll tell you, I would make ten forty in January.
Great.
That's great.
Yeah, unfortunately, what that means is that we always need more art, so, we are, I am open to it, there's, everyone says they're gonna do it, but then it takes months, so you know, having a couple more people, if anybody's interested in doing the cigar machine, or knows someone who might, we can talk to you about the protocol, of what, you know, the signs and stuff. I think it'd be great for anyone, so, but yeah, we're doing very well. Yes. Someone has volunteered, potentially. Um, but yeah, it, the cigar machine, it's fifty fifty, we keep ten, you keep ten, it's all, make something fast enough, so it justifies that we have a few people who are like make tiny masterpieces, and I'm always like, this is amazing, but, like, you know, you just spent like seven hours on this thing, they're about to sell for ten dollars, but.
Yeah.
So just some, you know, screen prints, things like that work well, people seem to love the machine, yeah.
And that's something, that's open to commissioners too, does it?
Angela does it.
Yeah, I'd be interested.
Yeah, um, Angela, we'll talk to you about how to do that.
I'll give you details.
And then how's the social media going?
It's going fine, um, as always, you guys have, if you don't have my number, please make sure you do, text me pictures and content, anything you want posted. Um, I'm mostly posting, um, a couple times a week right now about the party, of course. Um, thank you Tracy for gathering information about the artists, and doing, I could.
That's been really great.
Yeah.
I have to just, I was just like, oh, I gotta do one right now.
Yeah, yeah, um, so, for those of you that are new, I am in charge of the Instagram. Um, and coming, I like to post, you like, if we have an upcoming event, three times a week, um, I try to always, since, what, now for three years? Been doing it, um, Holly took over for a little while, that was really nice, I got a breather, um, I try to do two to three posts a week, and I rotate through topics, but I'm always running out of things, so anything you send me is really helpful, um.
Especially events, too.
Yeah, events.
Anything else, some art events?
Art events.
I've sent you some articles.
Yes, and those are a little difficult to.
So translate to Instagram.
Okay.
Yeah.
Pictures.
Pictures, and I can, like, if you send me an article link, and you think it's important information, I can usually find some information from that article to create the text content, but most important is I need a catchy picture, you know? Um, typically, other than sick art machine, stuff, uh, artists and events that we are specifically planning, um, I kinda reward the gallery owners who put together really nice Instagram content.
I don't think anybody has a problem with that.
Yeah, and, and so, like, they make really nice videos, or they're posting good information about specific artists, and I will share that as well, so, anything's in my way. It's appreciated.
And I'll post the event again on all the groups this week.
Great.
I like to only do that once every couple weeks, cause it gets kind of obnoxious.
Yeah, but, it's been just a boot out.
Plus, but did you find it annoying that there was a similar poster around town?
I did see that.
Was there?
They used the same.
Oh, yeah, 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 no, yeah, I know, um.
Ours is, mine is first.
Ours is, ours is better, actually. That is good, um, also, when it comes to social media, I'll let you guys know if you feel like I'm not, um, posting at a certain time, and you think I should. When we have events, I also get, share it onto my personal and some other Facebook pages I have, and then link it out into groups, and I, I don't wanna become so obnoxious that people hate me, so.
It's so vague, those, like, they, they used to say, so, the best time to post on Facebook is Wednesday at like two o'clock, cause everybody's bored at work, but then you're like, oh my god, most of these people in Bisbee aren't working.
Yeah. Well, and I do have.
Well, they, they had all these, they had those articles about that, and Instagram is completely different too, and I tried for years to like figure that out, I just think it.
I create, we have a system.
I, I've never said, if you don't, I don't, like, posting too late at night is something that kills it.
So I actually have a system that I've been doing.
I think you do great.
Yeah, so, three times a week, if I'm posting three times a week, I do one early morning, one midday, and one like after post dinner, um, to try to like get the broadest people.
I just think it's different depending on where you live, so all these theories are so.
And age dynamic, and all of that, so, I'm just trying to spread it around as much as I can, like shotgun effect, but without being so obnoxious, they quit listening, so.
That's the same thing about Facebook, I feel like you can even post it, like, especially if you're posting in groups, you have to be even more careful, because after a while, people just start getting really annoyed.
And they just ignore it.
Yeah.
Okay. So, my background for the last seventeen years is digital marketing, um, and design, so.
You wanna take over the social media?
I'm happy to.
Angela wants to.
Angela would like you.
We'll take over the social media.
Does anybody notice I keep bringing on people to take over my job?
It's not, it's not a dumb thing.
And, and even if it's not me fully taking things over, it's, um, setting up, I don't know if y'all use Canva, or whatever.
Well, that's what I wanted to talk to you about.
Okay, yeah, so I'm happy to set, help set systems to make things more like Arts Commission.
I would, I would talk to Angela about how, I mean, that you guys can work together, figure out something that works for you.
Yeah.
I would like to make this point that, the Arts Commission, when you come into it, it's very much about you can do all kinds of things, but you just have to tell us what you wanna do, and have the follow through, versus coming and, and assuming that we're gonna give you the job that you want.
Right.
We've had so many fabulous people over the years, I have been on this commission longer than, than I wanna admit, but we have people who have shown up and said, this is the project that I wanna do, and they, they're really happy because of it, versus waiting for us to give you a job, you know? If you think there's a hole where we need to do something, please let us know.[1639.01] If you think there's a hole where we need to do something, please let us know.
Yeah, and your special skills, like.
Yeah, you have special skills. If you're like really great at the zoo, we will find you a place to exist in this world. But um, I just, I mean, if that is what it, you know, we've had, and there've been people who disappointed because they wouldn't have been told, they need to be told what to do all the time a little bit more, you know? Like Sharon was a great example. I didn't say this thing. Um, so she came up with the Sig art machine. She fought like hell for it.
Yeah.
And it was a great idea. And she worked very hard, you know, and she was really happy about it. So. Anything else about social media? Then we're gonna go to art window. Anything?
Yeah.
It's empty right now. I was, I was inspired.
They're, they're doing, they're doing renovation on the inside.
That's what they're doing, okay.
That's what they told me.
We used to have a window display, especially, what was during COVID, where we would do different artists that had passed away and like, it was just a nice way to interact with the public without being able to.
Yeah.
We're trying to get it back, but that building had been damaged, so we're waiting until they're ready.
They, um, they, and they told me, I've got some Gugan forum and some, and a, an application because we want them applying for grants. Um, and I said I would help them with that in whatever way they needed it. But I, I saw Andy across the street and shouted in traditional Bisbee fashion everything I wanted to say to her. And she goes, oh, Ruby comes for a bit, but come by. And I said, it was great.
So let's reach out to them and then we'll see because it would be nice to have it back. Now that we have a full commission.
They're, they're happy. They're.
It's actually a fun job if somebody wants it, you know? You want the job?
No, well, maybe.
You have it, he has it.
So now you're, now you're giving away my job?
No, no, no.
No, it's more than a one-person job.
But you want, you want the job. You want the job.
I did plant a little bug in Doug Dunn's ear. He's the chair of their board. And I did just, I was in conversation with him and I was like, and, and by the way, I'm just gonna plant this bug. What's going on with that window? And you, you guys are doing a great job, but if you wanted us to do it once a month or whatever, we'd be more than happy to. So I did plant it in his brain too, just to.
Great.
So two different angles, perfect. Um, anything else about the art window? So then we have item eight, and this is the one that we have a hard time with, is future agenda items, and it's no discussion.
Like, we're not supposed to discuss.
We don't discuss that.
Just yell it out.
So just, if anybody has an agenda item that they would like to put on the next agenda, you could say it now. Or you can also, it's often the time where, and I'm discussing things, so I'm kind of breaking them in real.
No.
I'm explaining. You can, two weeks before the next meeting, just, you can email the city and they will email me if you have something you want on the agenda. And um, both of our new people too, after this party, if you want to sit down with me or any of the other commissioners and talk about, you know, just um, you know, what we're doing or like, you have questions about it, please feel free to reach out. We're here for you. We are a city, we are a government commission, so we are somewhat limited on what we, we can't just like, we push it a little bit, but we can't just have a frantic conversation here all the time, you know? So sometimes it's nice to sit down and.
So can we put on the debriefing?
Yeah, debrief. My social media thing. I mean, not social media, my.
I think it.
Party debrief.
It was a, yeah. And then anything else? And, and then just a reminder too that we do have to call a quorum. Should I call her tomorrow and tell her or?
I'll, I'll let her know.
Oh, yeah.
For what?
We have to call a quorum.
For sex.
Okay.
Yep.
Did we explain that to Kurt in Richardson's?
No, I'm not there.
We did explain.
Well, we're gonna have a whole, we're gonna go into the whole thing next time too. I'm gonna give all the rules.
Doug says it's four.
How, how.
A quorum is three or four?
Four.
Four.
Because three is too easy.
Yeah.
A short, tiny explanation of, in case you don't know, a quorum means more than half of this commission, right now, which is four. You should not discuss anything in this commission, like when it comes to decisions made in the future with a commission member. But if you have four of you together and you're doing that, you're breaking the law. And you can be fined. The worst thing that's happened to us is we've had the lawyers come and give us a very boring lesson about things. But that was not actually our fault. That was them doing it to every commission. But they do threaten us with that sometimes, where they will come back and do it again. I promise you, you don't want it to happen. Which is why we're going to go over it in the next meeting.
Perfect. Yeah, perfect.
Good?
Sounds good.
Do I have a motion?
I move to adjourn, smoothie.
To a second?
Second.
All ayes?
Aye.
Any ayes?
Good evening and thank you so much.
Make sure to turn on your.
Please turn on your mic or put.